We can get to our website, but of course you have to get to one.
You have to get to the website.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can.
And just a question you said.
It's really so intuitive, though.
Oh, it's like.
Sign up or sign in. So, you know, like if you click that, it's gonna take you through everything.
Do you have to be a parent in the district to sign up?
No, but there's all confidential information there. But, for example, there's a link to my school box and there's, but, but there you have to have your kid, so.
And then as far as teacher updates, I know in the past that was always an issue, um, teachers using email and whatnot of contract issues. Are they going to be required to update and do it on a timely basis besides the teachers, the guidance office, the other various offices to make sure what's there is current?
Uh, we are strongly encouraging people to, uh, to do that. But the example that I've been giving, um, because I think it's real, is that if you were, if you needed somebody's telephone number, would you go to the Yellow Pages or would you go to the internet? And if you're going to the internet, it's, it's, it's logical that you also allow parents to be informed in the same way. So if you're not, you know, finding the Yellow Pages and flipping through it to look for some, for a phone number that you require, if you are using the internet to be, you know, productive, um, then you should allow, then you should extend the same courtesy. So, um, we, we've been very pleased at the participation already. The other part of that, and we've been having this conversation for a year already, is that if you want parents to be your partners, then you need to keep parents informed. So, um, no, I think people understand that. I think, um, people see how easy the website is. Um, there will definitely be variations of use. There's already people that have videos up there and, I mean, they're going to town with this thing. Um, and then there's others that have the basic information up there. So, you know, just like anything, there's gonna be variation of use. But we created two, um, two templates, an elementary template and a secondary template for teachers. So we've actually made it very easy for them to just pull the template in and fill that out. So it's about the teacher and, and things like that.
The other concern, obviously, is a parent going through the college process the second time is getting the guidance current, college visits current, you know. Two years, three years ago doing this, nothing's current in that section. And it was very challenging to find, you know, what schools are coming, you know, honestly, we know you have to mind your kid. Oh, so let's kind of go sign up for that. But as far as the forums and things like that, um, scholarship information.
And guidance has its own page. So every department has its own page, including guidance, and there's somebody that is in charge of guidance to keep that.
Huge area to.
But when you make it easy to do, it's more likely to be done. Well, let Sheila know, because she finds.
She is. She's a lot more techy than I am, so, but. Actually, one other thing, sorry, 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 just a quick thing. The academy sounds awesome. But I know the challenge with the other academies, if you're a music student, you cannot do these academies or art students in there. And I know it's been looked at, but I know.
And this year, we went into next full year and there were, I think, five students where there was a conflict.
Okay. I know, and it got, obviously, my kids are older, but in the beginning, you know, neither of them could even think about it.
But we looked at that this year. We brought somebody in to sort of be another set of eyes on the master schedule. And, um, I believe that we ended up with five kids that had a conflict.
Yeah, and obviously, as it goes on, I know, like again, my kids are older, but the encouragement was up. You're a band student, you can't do it.
What does that mean? What does that mean? There was a conflict, they can't do it, or you found a way to work through the conflict?
Well, oh, we've, first, for many of them, we found a way to work through the conflict. So depending upon where you place things, you know, band, for example, might be one period in the day. And if you place band in the same period as you place, you know, like a medical academy class that is only offered one time, it creates a problem. But, you know, part of the challenge is lunch, you know, the lunch period's in the middle of the day. Even most of us in high school schedule is the morning. And, you know, and the placement of singletons. So, um, you know, so, so we watch that. Um, but it, it, you know, we, and we, I think, did a good job this year of making sure that we minimize the conflicts. But, you know, as you grow up, there are decisions you have to make in life. And so, um, you know, as we look at our academy programs too, one of the things that, um, is really sort of coming to light is that across, across the academies, there are classes that we can offer that, it doesn't matter which academy that you're in. So, for example, in the New Media Academy, whether you choose to go into the medical sciences, or you go into law and government, or you're in global business, um, there are new media departments and every one of those in everything, you know, there's, I mean Christina is our new media department in, department in involvement. And, and every place has that. So no matter what your, what, what your academy you're in, you know, making that class available, you know, like a writing for new media class, making that available should cut across academies. And I think the more that we do that, the more successful we're gonna be at minimizing, um, what the conflicts are. So, you know, we're, we're, we have our eye on that, we're watching that. I can't say that there won't be any conflicts. Um, but again, you know, the, the creation of new academies and the refinement of the, of the existing academies is all about two things. It's about our kids and it's about where their jobs gonna be. And really developing those academies around where their jobs are.
Hi, well, it's Patrick, two two eight four mark. We have him. I just wanna say thank you. As a parent of children who's in school districts since nineteen ninety-eight, madam Kelly describing this year. I was just very pleased with both their educations, their treatment, the board, he's done a fabulous job. And this year especially, with Kelly's graduation is cute. The class of twenty fifteen as compared to the class of twenty fourteen, they were fabulous. Everything went wonderfully, right time graduation, his speeches were amazing. And it was just, it was fantastic. And I just wanted to thank you. And it's obviously, we've been quite happy to listen. So, we said this, but, um, I, I thank you all very much for, for educating my girls so nicely.
It's not your mistake.
There's always me.
Well, not a roster.
This is electrical, please.
Yes, it is. He are, thank you.
So, can we go on then? Are you guys good? Okay. So, going to special services, the Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, Sub-SCSC five oh four committee, and Committee on Preschool Special Education for October, November, December, two thousand fourteen, and January, February, March, April, May, June, and July, two thousand fifteen, as detailed in the Thursday note. Moved by Mr. Press, second by Mr. DeRusso. Because this contains names of students, we're not allowed to discuss this in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yeah. Um, there's new home tune in special education, so it's moving on to the business of camp. The Board of Education approves the renewal of student accident insurance housing with J.J. Stannis and Company for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year at an annual cost of twenty-five thousand four hundred sixty-one thousand forty-one cents, a decrease of nine hundred eighty-six dollars and five cents from last year, as detailed in the Thursday note. So, move by Mrs. Hagen, second by Mr. Press. Are there any questions or comments on this?
I just, okay, I wanna point out, was that last year we had increases as well, so it's two decreases in a row.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves cellphone usage. Oh, I skipped one, I'm sorry. The Board of Education approves the credit card annual report for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Are there any questions or comments on this side? Yes, zero. And, and we're talking about doing something about that, yes, and the future, right. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the cellphone usage annual report, annual report for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Are there any questions or comments on this side? Any questions or comments on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the contract with preferred meals with contractor pricing at down forty-nine cents for breakfast and two thousand forty-two cents for lunch for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Is that correct?
Well.
I don't know, it's fifteen sixteen.
Fifteen sixteen.
Yeah, it says that on the backup material, it says fifteen sixteen.
Yeah. Okay, so this is two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. All those, so, do we have, do we have to do, do we need to, all the changes? All right, all those in favor?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, questions?
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanted to know why are we adding the breakfast part of it?
We're required, because we're a state, because we have a lunch program, we're required, we tried to get a waiver for a year.
Last year was the waiver.
Well, no, last year we started with the lunch program, we tried to get a waiver for next full year for breakfast, they would not allow us to get a waiver.
So I do have a question also. Um, are you gonna be sending out a letter to parents about the breakfast program and?
We already sent letters out, um, in the spring.
Oh, right, right, but I need to let them, that was sort of like a survey.
It was a survey letter to see whether or not we were gonna offer it in each individual building.
So now that we know that we are, when are we gonna notify the parents and how it's gonna happen?
Right, so in the back to school letter, there'll be information there about the start time for breakfast and the end time for breakfast and the process for that.
I don't remember getting it.
It's in the pile.
Oh, you mean like the day before school? That sounds like the day before school, but it's a teacher.
Yeah, the week before, it's for Labor Day.
Yes.
We get like a day or two before school.
I just turned out with a teacher assignment, so that.
That's very, that's, one year we had to go look on the door, remember that?
Right.
We didn't get it at all.
Because it was the, and all this is.
But, um, so it will be till a couple of days before school that parents know about. Is breakfast going to affect dropping off your kids, or, I mean, what happens if it roll out?
Breakfast is going to start earlier. Um, it's gonna be at eight fifteen, um, in total eight thirty-five. Um, and so the kids who are opting for breakfast will be allowed to come in at eight fifteen, but they have to be scared to eat breakfast. It's not daycare for, you know, one hour, and that's something that we're gonna be watching and monitoring.
So don't you think we should roll that out kind of soon, so people can plan their work life around it? I think parents need at least a couple of weeks' notice.
We're still starting the program.
Yeah. I mean, we're still figuring this thing out. What?
We're still working the staff.
So it might not be happening the first day of school?
No, we'll have them the first day.
But I guess what Jeff was saying, which I think I agree with her, is that, okay, so you said after survey that this could be coming, this could not be coming. We don't know, we've not received as an announcement, we've not received an announcement that this is actually taking place. So I guess, I mean, I have to agree with her, I think that you need to, you should have something going out prior to two days before you get your, when you get your assignment saying, you know, this is coming. I know there's additional posters and whatnot, but I think.
Hello, additional posters, and I don't know that we will be ready to do that, but we can certainly take that under advisement and see, you know, if we can.
Because I guess the other questions, I think, you said something out, you got a lot of questions and things like that. The other.
If parents just notify a couple of days before school starts, I think you're gonna get a lot of complaints about, why did I, I suppose two weeks ago I could be taking the eight twenty train, it's been the eight forty train. You know, I don't know.
And so I understand that.
Yeah.
But respectfully, it's not a before care program, so.
Well, that's why my concern is that they may utilize it as a before care program. And how are you going to handle that, because then that will also affect the traffic and.
Right, and staffing.
And staffing.
Right. And one of the things that, that, you know, we did, we've been talking about traffic and, um, um, Mr. Endazzo and Dr. Draper went and did some survey of buildings and, you know, so we're working on that, we're working on the staffing of the breakfast program, um, you know.
You said eight fifteen?
Right. So there's still a lot to be done and we, you know, we're still working out the kinks of that. Um, the other thing that you should know is that, um, Dr. Draper will be visiting all of the buildings for breakfast and for lunch to check out the quality of food and the temperature and all of that, so. I know it's not the answer you want, but it's, it, you know, we're, we're still working on it.
Right.
The posting to staff of the program just went out yesterday.
I think, I mean, you could at least kind of let people know, kind of on the horizon, maybe I maybe.
You're just gonna be like, you're working on this, keep an eye out for it. I do feel like the letter that we get, I get the letter in August, I get the third week in August, so.
No, it's not a month ago. Two days before, right? Sometimes it'd be before.
Well, we can see that, there's a reason. Mail it out earlier, and that might, that might help solve the problem.
Then it's just an additional paragraph within the letter.
Also make the.
Make the, be the, be, I mean, you may not get everyone, but you'll, you'll get a lot of less people. They know, oh, keep an eye out for it.
All right, so are there any more questions or, or discussion on this side? Okay, so can we vote on it?
Yeah, of course.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those close, staying. Okay, the Board of Education approves the renewal dental contract with Dental Care Delivery Systems, Health Plots, Blue Fitz, Harris and Company for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Any questions or comments on this side?
Can I just ask one question? The three items on dental care, the three contracts, you just, in very short one sentence, what's the difference? What, what's?
Two, we self-insure, but they're different, there are three bargaining units that have three different contracts.
Oh, okay, that's, okay, that's all I need to know.
So then, I just wanna, so this one, the individual coverage didn't increase in the family, it increased only fifty cents per month. So that's pretty good.
Well, any, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the renewal of the dental contract with Ameritas Life Insurance Company through. Oh, there's, check out. All right, the Board of Education approves the renewal of this district's self-funded dental program with Fitz, Harris and Company for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Any questions or comments on this side?
This one, that no increases either.
All those in favor? Opposed, standing, trumped out. Now, we're number seven, the Board of Education approves the renewal of the dental contract with Ameritas Life Insurance Company through Fitz, Harris and Company for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. DeRusso. Are there any questions or comments on this side? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education authorizes participation in the National School Lunch Program for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year and approves the adoption of the policy statement, certification statement, news release and application as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mrs. Hagen, second by Mr. Press. Are there any questions or comments on this side? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the NASA BOSE's letter of intent for two thousand fifteen, sixteen services as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Are there any questions or comments on this side? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the NASA BOSE's final AS seven agreement for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand fourteen, fifteen services as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Are there any questions or comments on this side?
And just, I guess, just for the people in the audience, we're like, what's an AS seven? Maybe someone. Oh, so this, and just the, sort of the cost of the programs that we, we, um, took advantage of for the past school year. Good BOSEs, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the NASA BOSE's initial AS seven agreement for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen services as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mrs. Hagen and second by Mr. Press. Are there any questions or comments on this side?
I just, this actually represented a pretty significant reduction in costs for us, so it was over a million dollars.
That's temporary.
Temporary.
Temporary, yeah. Okay, so it'll go up, but I mean, I mean, our letter of intent is initial AS seven. I mean, it'll change too.
Yeah, it changes, yeah. Yeah, this is an estimate, really.
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the two thousand thirteen, fourteen capital improvement program, phase one change order number one, window replacement at middle school on the amount of two thousand dollars as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. DeRusso. Are there any questions or comments on this side? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, the Board of Education approves the HVAC reconstruction contract bid to HVAC, the lowest response bid letter in the amount of eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, and the basing reconstruction bid to A1 Construction, the lowest responsive letter in the amount of one eighteen thousand nine hundred fifty dollars as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Are there any questions or comments on this side?
I did a question just about what this, what, what all of this is, like, what is the HVAC reconstruction?
Uh, middle schools, uh, gonna have refurb, refurbishment of their HVAC system in the old corner. And the masonry part is always locked and there's, uh, a lot of hazard issues with, uh, whoever's being united.
Okay, so HVAC in the Florida part of the middle school, it's just heat and it's just.
The way for the audition.
Any other questions or comments on this side? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves, approves payment of the health and welfare services contracts for twenty-eight students with the Manhasset Union Preschool District, Saint Mary's High School and Elementary School for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year in the amount of eight hundred thirty-two thousand nine hundred four six ninety-four dollars per student for a total of twenty-three thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-two cents as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mrs. Hagen, second by Mr. Press. Any questions or comments on this side? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the tuition contract for the special education of two non-resident students from an Alvin Union Preschool District for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Are there any questions or comments on this side? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the transportation contract for subscriptions for veterans, Lee, first student, suburban, acne, bounder, and veteran, veteran's twice? Veterans twice? For the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year as detailed in Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Are there any questions or comments on this side?
I just, I think we should make note that the increases, the zero percent increase across the board for all of these, so it was in the same ways for fifteen, sixteen, which has been consulted, who came and told us in very good ways, so.
Okay.
Excellent.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the agreement with Milamat Interpreter Services to provide sign, sign language interpreting services for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Are there any questions or comments on this side? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Press, please.
Aye.
The Board of, Board of Education approves the agreement with IBER Translation to provide translation and interpreting services as needed for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mrs. Hagen, second by Mr. Press. Are there any questions or comments on this side? I just wanted to ask publicly, because I had a conversation a little bit about this, um, so will the service be available to us to send some of our communications from the school, like if we want to translate from English to Spanish? Um, it will. We, we have internal capacity to do this, but this is a professional translating and interpreting company, so, um, you know, it gives us the option of doing it that way. Um, but yes, for, you know, for meeting or mailing and things such that, we can go to IBER for that. And, and sort of on a side note, one of the nice things about our website is that it, the entire website, if I click a button, translates into different languages. So, um, you can, if you're a Spanish-speaking family, you can click on translate to Spanish, if you're Haitian Creole, you can say translate to, you know, to Haitian Creole. Um, that is one of the options.
No.
You have to be able to get that, so you gotta know how to. Okay, are there any other questions or comments on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the contract for free students attending Harmony Heights School and for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year in the amount of twenty-six thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars per student for a total of seven one thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mrs. Hagen and second by Mr. Press. Are there any questions or comments on this side? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the contract for one student attending Carncliff Manor for the retarded for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year in the amount of fifty-five thousand, fifty-five thousand four hundred two dollars per student as detailed in the Thursday. So, move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Are there any questions or comments on this side? And yes, it, that's the name of the school, I didn't think about that. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the Board of Education approves the contract with Amanda McCarthy to provide student training and behavioral consultative services for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Are there any questions or comments on this side? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the contract with Ms. Lydia Swinton to provide Polish evaluation services for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mrs. Hagen, second by Mr. Press. Are there any questions or comments on this? Is there, do we have a person in the past? Polish, I don't know if we've had in the past, but we do have Polish-speaking families, so.
Yeah, it said there were no services provided last year, but.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the contract with this Gina Costalba to provide professional development services, not to exceed twenty-eight days for a total expenditure of thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Are there any questions or comments on this side?
I have a question, just so you better understand, so, you know, related to the one that we didn't approve yet. Uh, the Gina Costalba versus Erica. Erica. What's the distinction if one has twenty-eight days versus one has four days?
Uh, the ones that are the lower days are actually some curriculum writing, you want those things?
Yeah, because the bullets are the same.
Gina and Emma are our team, and based on the fact that they have five elementary buildings, one person put in service, all five, so they, according to their calendar, and their commitments of the school districts.
Okay.
We split the days based on their ability. So, and they're doing, basically, they're both doing professional development, Gina's doing the full building, and they're all doing the morning. And they're both, well, you know, curriculum writing also, but they're teams.
Okay.
So we did separate contracts.
Any other questions or comments on this side? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the contract with this Gina Costalba for the revision of the existing reading and writing curriculum, not to exceed seven point five days for a total expenditure of seven thousand five hundred dollars for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year as detailed in the Thursday note. Move by Mr. Press, second by Mrs. Hagen. Are there any questions or comments on this side? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the contract with Ms. Erica Caparelli to provide professional development services, not to exceed seven days for a total of eight thousand four hundred dollars for the two thousand. for a total of $8,400 for the 2015-16 school year as detailed in Thursday.
Move.
Move by Mrs. Solhage.
Second.
Second by Mr. Press. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the contract with Ms. Erica Pacarelli for revision of the existing reading and writing curriculum not to exceed 7.5 days for a total expenditure of $7,500 for the 2015-16 school year as detailed in Thursday. Move. Move by Mr. Press.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Solhage. Any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the contract for reinforcement to a parent with mileage to and from and out of district placement for which the parent is entitled to reinforce it and move the district supply and pain, payment for bus for the, for this transportation as detailed in Thursday.
Move.
Move by Mrs. Solhage.
Second.
Second by Mr. Press. Any questions or comments on this item?
Just one question, if that's, I've been around for a while, I haven't seen that before. Um, so the parent has, is choosing to drive the child. Michelle. The parent is choosing to drive the child and the district, they can claim mileage?
I think it's also if they go there for CSE, the, to the residence where the child is at, they can claim mileage.
There is a provision that allows parents to be able to bill us for their, their expense. I don't know if you, if you know what programs.
Okay, you're not talking about daily, you're talking about, they may claim it. If a child is in a residential placement, for instance, then they go to visit the child, they can, okay, right.
Any other questions or comments on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation of $3,000 for two smart televisions, two Wi-Fi-enabled keyboards and two TV parts from the Meadow Side Base Committee to be used at metal school as detailed in Thursday.
Move.
Move by Mr. Press.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Solhage. Any questions or comments on this item? All right, we'll just say thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation of $1,000 from the Metro Company, an offer of promise from a grant application to be used for the STEMAC ad for the 2015-16 school year as detailed in Thursday.
Move.
Move by Mr. Press.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Solhage. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the disposition of obsolete TVs, VCRs, parts and DVD player from Lennox School that are no longer functional for state rules and regulations as detailed in Thursday.
Move.
Move by Mr. Press.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Solhage. Any comments or questions? And no, we will not be selling the truck.
Where will you be selling them? You think they sell them to the teachers?
Maybe any of that, it'll be sold.
I do have these too.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the disposition of obsolete foreign language textbooks that are no longer useful per state rules and regulations as detailed in Thursday.
Move.
Move by Mr. Press.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Solhage. Any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the disposition of obsolete math and social studies textbooks from Brookside School that are no longer useful for state rules and regulations as detailed in Thursday.
Move.
Move by Mrs. Doruska, second by Mr. Press. Any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the disposition of obsolete equipment that is broken beyond repair and have been stripped of any useful parts per state rules and regulations as detailed in Thursday.
Move.
Move by Mr. Press.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Solhage. Any questions or comments on this item?
Well, so what, what happened to me? What did we do?
So the hard drives were stripped from all of them. Um, they will go to a shredding company. Um, the other parts of the equipment go to a recycling company.
Any other questions or comments on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Board of Education approves the dispossessment report for August 2015 through June 2016 as detailed in Thursday.
Move.
Move by Mr. Press.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Solhage. Any questions or comments? We don't need to do something new at the moment. You do, right? So, okay, any motion, table action of this?
Why don't you just, um, do it as a method and we'll take this off and we'll put it on the next one? Also, we can approve the others.
Okay.
So, so, um, so we're gonna take the, uh, all of these.
Did we, have we not suspended it for now? I think, no.
It was like the poundy year, 2014.
Okay, so, all right, the workup, all right, good. All right, so I just wanted to double check.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is that, we can add to all of them.
So, I just wanted to make sure, the terms of the board priorities, that discussion happens tomorrow. Where that's come to, we're out of it, we can't specifically talk about board business. So we're gonna have train on what to do in terms of writing board priorities. And then we'll come back to what we're actually going to do with the involvement.
September and January.
Uh, no, we're looking to do that, um, before the opening of school and that's, um, why we put together a board meeting.
Is that part of the 12th, 17th? Seventeen. I'm just saying, I can't, I didn't even know we were having anyone on the 17th.
No, that was in the party mailing.
Does it? Yeah. It just came out on this Friday, right?
Yeah.
This one.
Does that happen for you?
I could do the 17th.
Do the 17th?
I cannot.
Yeah, but I can.
Well, the only problem with not is that we're gonna start school without, without priority. I mean, we don't want, I don't want to do that again. We did it last year, we've done it the last two years. The principal wants to send something out like that, so.
Well, I mean, we can do the meeting on the 17th.
Oh, I was just gonna say, don't let it, yeah, as long as it's important. I'll try to make it, it would, you know, it depends on the time and whatever, but, yeah, don't, don't worry about it.
I mean, if it's, if it's worked on on the 17th, then it can be presented again on the 24th, even though that's a very short.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah. About week, but you have that.
Twenty.
We've got a long weekend.
Yeah. So we have everybody between the two days. So we can really run one on the 17th and then, no, the 24th and the 25th. So that's meant, it's meant to be a very short meeting, so.
Okay, so, the 24th is the one. Yeah, that's the one that's during the day up to the Montejo orientation. Seventeenth is at evening. Right. Are we there?
That is here, that's the fourth.
And the 17th?
It's here.
No, it's here.
It's here, but it's not in here because the, the. Well, the meeting is here, yeah. And I'm with a new teacher's right after school, so.
I'll, we'll wait a meter, a twenty-fourth or a jump. Okay, so anything else?
Those are both old meetings, the 17th and 24th.
Seventeenth and 24th, but the 24th is meant to be a very short open except the door, which is the purpose of the, the CSE. I was looking for my important dates. All right, so, um, before I open the floor for our second conference section, upcoming important dates, uh, B.O.E., beginning meeting, when's? Monday, so it's a Monday. Monday.
Monday.
August 17th. Special Board of Education meeting, Monday, August 24th, 9:30 a.m. Both meetings taking place at the district office. First day of school for the little kiddies. That is Wednesday, September 2nd. School's closed for Labor Day on Monday, September 7th. And our next, we're scheduled, Board of Education, Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, September 1st, here at the district office.
On Wednesday, especially the board is.
All right, so.
That's, that's bad.
Does anybody, all two of you, have any questions?
Right.
I just gave a little of the high side, not a row. You can ask your questions on the way home.
I moved the.
You too, Joe. No. Second.
All right, let's see.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nine forty-seven? Seven forty-seven?
I think it may be, I remember we always.